Good evening and welcome to December 20th, 2016, regular scheduled County Commissioner Board meeting. Tonight I've asked Commissioner Clyde Fleming to offer an invocation and pledge.
Let us pray. Our Father, we come thanking you for all your blessings. Thank you for the blessing you bestowed upon us. Father, we thank you for how you watched over and protected. We pray that you be with us this day. Father, bless all our friends, our neighbors, look on our community. Bless all our leaders. Oh, we realize that you made us blessed tonight if we take care of county business, give us the strength. It was a mind to do your will. Help us to be good steward in your will. Father, we love you, we thank you. Oh, God, look over our country, our nation as a whole. Father, we thank you for the weather. We even thank you for as well as it is tonight. Father, be with us and bless us. Bless our commission tonight. Look over the chairman tonight. Bless all our commissioners. Father, give us strength. We love you, we thank you. This we ask in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Congratulations.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight, our first item on the agenda is approval of minutes from the December 6th, 2016, regular scheduled board meeting. Gentlemen, do I have any changes or do I hear a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Do I hear a second? Who's second? Got a motion to approve. Commissioner Fleming, second by Commissioner Hale. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Next item is consent agenda. I got item two through 11. Is there anything that any commissioners would like pulled for discussion? If not, need a motion to approve items two through 11. Second? Got a motion to approve by Commissioner Richardson, second by Sessions. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Same sign. Next on the agenda we have is time specific at 6:10. So I'm gonna skip down to commissioner items. Item number 14 has been pulled by Commissioner Fleming. We don't have a spot on the agenda for constitutional officers, but Sheriff Tony Cameron has asked to speak to the board, so at this time I'm gonna open the floor up to Sheriff.
I just wanted to give you a little bit of good news, I think, for you and the taxpayers of the county, that we've closed out all of our budget things and we've got it all lined up to exactly what will be coming to the board. There's $96,421.66 that's coming to the board. That's money that we take in, like, from grants and those kind of things that we reimburse and at the end of the year we turn it back into you, whatever it came in. Also, out of our general fund, the Sheriff's Office General Fund, there's $335,951.31, which is approximately just under 4% of the budget of the Sheriff's Office that is going to be returned. So the total check that you will receive this week will be $432,371.97. And I think that, I'm telling you this and saying, the Sheriff's Office still needs to receive the funding that it's receiving, but we had a really good year. We had lower numbers that stayed in jail. The judges moved them through the system faster, so the jail budget didn't have to spend as much money on feeding inmates. We've got the lowest number of inmates that we've had in years right now, but we're arresting more people than we ever have. But the judges and the State Attorney's Office moving these people onto prison or back out onto the street as probationers much quicker. So it has saved some money this year. And the other thing is, gas prices have been reasonable this year, and so it made a lot of difference on patrol and those kind of things to keep the cost down. And you never know when it's gonna go up. We had a successful year with the hurricane season, even though we had a Hermine that came through and did a lot of wind damage. Sheriff's Office-wise, it wasn't a big expenditure for the Sheriff's Office. So just wanted to let you know that Sheriff St. John, when he comes in, he's gonna need your support and need you to continue to fund him the way you have me. And I appreciate how you have funded me the 12 years that I've been the sheriff. And each year, we have been able to give you money back. And I don't believe in wasting money. I believe in taking that money and turning it back to you to take care of whatever projects you see fit that you need to do. And with that, they will give you the check for $432,000 this week. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I will say, Sheriff, over the last four years, it's been a privilege to work with you. Congratulations on your retirement. Hate to see you go, but look forward to working with Sheriff Alec St. John. I believe that one of the reasons the board over the years has worked good with you during budget time is we knew that we could count on you at the end of the year to come back and do exactly what you've done this year. I think you've turned back money every year that I've been on the board. And I look forward to carrying that same relationship on with Sheriff Alec. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Go ahead.
I would like to say to Sheriff, you know, every year that I've been on the board, you gave money back and look forward to collecting some of those funds. And I'm quite sure the board has worked with, you know, the Douglas Center, that project that we've been trying to do, some things that we've been trying to get accomplished. And maybe, you know, the board see fit that we utilize some of those funds once we get our project onboard and looks forward to working with incoming sheriff. I see he's here tonight and I say congratulations to your retirement and we look forward to working with the incoming sheriff today. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
Quick comment.
Sheriff?
Sheriff Cameron, I don't, is this your last meeting here? Is it?
Well, I'll just go ahead and get on the parade then. Let me just tell you, and I've commented to commissioners from time, some of them know, some of them don't know, but you have, not only have we had a great working relationship, I mean, we speak from time to time on any number of issues, radio tower and just whatever happens to be going on that affects both of us. But you've served on the insurance committee, I believe, since I've been here. And you have been a tremendous part of that committee and made a world of difference. Sheriff has shared his wisdom and his experience on that committee every year that he's been there. And, I mean, I think together, we've worked on a number of potentially crisis issues and gone to bid in cases and done any number of things that we could to try to keep the cost down for the taxpayers. And I really appreciate your input on that committee and I'm gonna miss you there. You've made a world difference the whole time you've been there, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Two years have been great for me. Thank you, Tony.
I've known him my whole life and I just wish you well in you, whatever you're gonna do. I know you're not gonna sit still very long, but, yes, so.
So we got just a few minutes before our time specific. I'm gonna jump on over to item 15. It'll be a pretty quick item. It's just the 2017 Annual Committee Appointments. In your backup, there's a copy of the different committees and which commissioners got appointed to which one. I'll read it off real quick. I'm not gonna read everybody that's on it, I'm just gonna read the commissioners, because that's the only thing that changed with the exception of the insurance. Airport Committee, Commissioner Clyde Fleming. Develop Authority, La-Z- I can't say it.
Liaison.
Liaison.
There we go.
Don Hale. And the alternate was Ronnie Richardson. Ag Advisory, Larry Sessions. Fair Board, Larry Sessions. Insurance Group, Ronnie Richardson. And replacing Sheriff Tony Cameron will be Sheriff Alec, Sam St. John. Library Committee, it'll be myself. Municipal Relations Standing Committee, be myself and Clyde Fleming. North Florida Regional Planning Council is Larry Sessions. North Florida Economic Development Partnership, Ronnie Richardson. Parks and Rec, be myself. Small County Coalition, Clyde Fleming. Larry Sessions. Solid Waste, Clyde Fleming. Swanee River Economic Council, Ronnie Richardson. Swanee Valley Coalition for Progress, Don Hale. Swanee Valley Transit Authority, Don Hale and Ronnie Richardson. And Transportation Disadvantaged, Don Hale. And that's all of them. There was one eliminated from the list, which was the Fire Board, but the board sunsetted that committee during the budget workshops. At this time, it is 6:10, so we'll move back to our time specific. At 6:10 PM, or soon as the matter can be heard, Presentation of Commercial Insurance Refund from the Florida League of Cities Physical Year 2016, 15-2016, Lee Harvard, BW Helvis Sun Insurance. We're gonna turn the floor over to Mr. Harvard.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Chairman, and fellow commissioners. Again, it's a happy time to come before y'all under these circumstances. And first of all, I do want to congratulate Mickey on his reelection.
Thank you.
I want to also congratulate Commissioner Hale and Commissioner Richardson on their election. I know the campaign is a strenuous process and I just congratulate you on your success.
Absolutely.
And I know y'all do a great job.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Tonight, I bring you some great news. Again, most of you have heard this before, but I always say this a little bit, I'll cut it a little short this year, but I always like to say this to really applaud the commissioners for the great job they do and Mr. Harris on the insurance. And it is news about your renewal of your commercial general liability, your property, your workers' comp, your inland marine, and your automobile with the Florida Municipal Insurance Trust for the year of 10/116 to 17. As I said, fortunately for the county, you've heard this presentation several times, in fact, eight years, but it bears repeating. And in the last eight years, for the policy periods of 10/106 to 10/114, I have brought you a return premium checks in the amount of $516,060 for those eight profitable years the league had with its property exposures, and that's really what it's based on. $516,060 represents your pro-rata share of $65 million that the Florida League of Cities, Florida Municipal Insurance Trust, has shared with its members. Tonight, I am again here to present you a return premium check of $37,868 for the profitable year the league had with their property exposure for the 14-15 year. This is, again, your pro-rata share of $4.5 million return premium in 2016, given back to its members. For the new commissioners, this return premium on a pro-rata basis is based on two issues. Number one, it's calculated on each member's in the state property premium for the 14-15 year. And number two, it's given to all FMIT members that, again, renew their insurance coverage with the league for the 2/116 to 17 policy year. I've mentioned to you in the past that the league is by far the largest writer of municipalities. They write over 600 municipalities in the state of Florida, and they are the best for, let me give you four reasons. Number one, for this, the return premium, understand that they are a nonprofit trust versus a for-profit trust or company, like a Travelers or there's another competitor called Pidgeot or Brown and Brown. Both Brown and Brown and Travelers are stockholder companies. And they have to answer, obviously with their profits, they have to answer to their stockholders. But the League of Cities is a nonprofit organization and they only answer to their members, to you. And as a result, when they have good years, they share their profits as well as they can. Now, understand that even despite the $69.5 million that they've given back to you, each year they have to look and see what their financial condition is, and they want to make sure, obviously, that they maintain a strong financial position. Well, looking at that and what they can do as far as return premiums when they can, when they've had good years, understand that the league is still very strong financially. They're almost $2 million in surplus, I mean, $200 million in surplus and $470 million in assets. Number two, they are obviously the largest writer for a reason. They're very competitive with their premiums. They're very competitive and they have to be, or they wouldn't write the most municipalities in the state of Florida. Number three, as I mentioned last year, they're always, their insurance program is, to me, the most comprehensive there is in the state. They're always updating their coverages to meet the changing world and the changing insurance exposures that are in the world. And I'm sure you cannot pick up paper without reading about cyber liability coverage and cyber liability issues when somebody gets into your computer system and so forth. Last year, they added this coverage of $250,000, but no premium, no additional premium. This year, they've increased that coverage to $500,000 with no additional premium. Best claim service, not only in their claim department, but also through an independent corporation called Xenergy. And the Swanee County became aware of Xenergy when, through Hurricane Debbie, we had a sinkhole issue at the courthouse. They came on-site, put on a mobile unit there and took care of the claim right there. And they used to do that, obviously, with catastrophes, had a big fire, sinkhole problem or whatever. But they're independent, they come in and do the big jobs for the league. The league really appreciates your business, I can tell you that. They really appreciate your business. I, as your local agent, appreciate your business tremendously. As a result, I take your insurance program very seriously and understand, I spend a tremendous amount of time with your program because it deserves it. It deserves it and it needs it. You have a lot of issues. As a person that has been in the insurance business for 42 years, I think your insurance program is one of the most important issues that a municipality faces and needs the proper product to protect your issues. The county has approximately $78 million in property assets. It has 230 vehicles and it has many extensive liability exposures. Therefore, your insurance program demands constant attention. I work very closely with the Human Resource Director, Carissa Setzer. Carissa constantly provides me with insurance information that is an important part to me to be able to do the good job that I do for you, the county. It is also a pleasure to work with Mr. Harris, primarily through Carissa, and I know that most of the information I get and the issues that come to me are from Mr. Harris. It's also a pleasure to work with Mr. Harris, and I know for a fact, not only personally but through the county, that he does a fabulous job. And obviously, with what you've done and the wisdom that you've used, obviously, you as county commissioners do a great job. Again, as your local agent, I want to thank you for your business. I always have and always will work very hard for the county to make sure that your best interest regarding insurance is served. Thank you again. And again, it's a pleasure to bring this check to you.
Thank you. We're getting all kind of money tonight.
That's good. Good.
Thanks, sir. We appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Harvard? At the Board of County Commissioners, you usually do, I want to thank you for all the contributions that you have made down through the years since I've been on this board also. Thank you very much.
Great job and appreciate your business and I started to work for you and I just appreciate your support. You're a great work force and your staff is great to work for.
Thank you.
We got good staff.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Moving on to the next item, 13, another time specific at 6:15 PM or soon thereafter the matter can be, hold a public hearing to consider the adoption of a resolution approving special permit request number SP 161201 by the Swanee County Board of County Commissioners for a solid waste collection site as an essential service special permit for Section 14.11 of the Land Development Regulations. At this time, I will open a public hearing and we'll turn our attentions to Ron Meeks, Planning and zoning director.
All right. Thank you. As we move forward, if there's anybody here that anticipates that they may give testimony in the public hearing today, would you stand to be sworn? Everybody, if you would, please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you give before the board this evening will be the truth, so help you God?
I do.
All right. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, board members, the special permit application that you have before you, special permit number 16-12-01, is a special permit for an essential service solid waste collection site. The special permit for essential services is something that we typically deal with with communication towers for the most part, but the definition for essential services is very broad. It includes a variety of different things in dealing with electrical, water, sewer, solid waste collection and disposal. So therefore, this application would fall under that Section 14.11 of essential services rather than the 14.6 that we normally deal with, intensive ag and other types of special permits with. This proposed site is located in Section 8 Township 3 South, Range 15 East. It's off of US 90 East, just outside of Welverne. The property is a 3.16 acre parcel in size and is currently zoned agricultural one. The property currently is vacant, some overgrown broom sage that's on the property currently, but no structures. You have a site plan that's been submitted with the application that shows the general layout of the proposed site, with the ingress and egress coming off of US 90, and the location of the containers and the associated bins with the collection site. With your information that's been provided to you, you also have a proposed resolution that would be for approval if the Board of County Commissioners so chooses to approve that. And then if they so choose to add any additional conditions there, those will be added after that approval. At this time, I would enter the file into the record, answer any questions the board may have in regards to this request.
Mr. Meeks, thank you. I'll take in the file as composite exhibit one.
Board members, do you have any questions for Mr. Meeks? Seeing none, at this time, I'd open the floor to public comments. Seeing none, at this time, I'll close public comments and open this up for board discussion.
I'd like to make a motion.
All right, go right ahead.
Anybody wants to discuss it?
All I was gonna say is, the one that we're replacing, this has been a long time coming and is needed.
Been two years for me, so this is a good thing for me, so I'd like to make a motion to approve SP 16-1201.
I have a motion to approve by Commissioner Sessions. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by, was that Commissioner Richardson? Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question regarding the, I have to assume that this site will be set up similar to the way our sites have been, y'all have, the previous commission has voted to do things like with cameras, plenty of lighting, make sure that we're not having the same problems and the problems aren't following the site from the current Welverne site to the new one. I know some of that's gonna be mitigated with the fact that it's gonna be a lot more public.
That's one thing I was gonna say, just by moving it from the current location to this location, it brings it kinda to the forefront. It's wide open, public. I mean, you're on Highway 90, there's a lot more visibility there than where it's tucked back off of 137 currently. I didn't mean to interrupt you, though.
That's okay. I just wanna know that it's, that's the plans, the plans going forward to make sure that this new site meets the same criteria as the other sites that we got decided recently.
I would have to refer that to Mr. Harris, but I mean, I can only assume that this site's gonna follow the same plans that any of our other sites follow.
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, today we have a plan to extend the hours at all of our sites because we're planning to close up all those walk-in gates. Walk-in gates are catastrophe. Major exposure to liability with people crawling in those open containers all night long, all day. So it's not only a liability issue with people that come in and scavenge, but also a liability with our own employees who have to pick all this stuff up. We have syringes in there, needles in there, broken glass, all types of things. So closing the gates is gonna help, but extending the hours will provide better service for our customers as well. If you looked at the site plan, proposed site plan that's in your packet, you'll see that this site is being proposed with the compactor units and the enclosed containers. Today, your sites have anywhere from 16 to 28-yard or 6-yard containers that are overflowing all over the place. A single enclosed container set up with a compactor unit can replace anywhere from 15 to 18 of those current 8-yard containers that are just open. So it's gonna be a much cleaner site and with the extended hours and additional days to be added to provide more service to the public, the lighting and the cameras that you mentioned, the fact that it isn't in a remote location like the current site is, I think we're gonna provide a much better service, much safer service, and one that will be much cleaner than what we've experienced in the past.
Anybody else have any further discussion? Seeing none, I have a motion to approve by Commissioner Sessions, a second, Commissioner Richardson. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Same sign. Motion passes 5-0. At this time, we'll close public hearing. Moving on to item 16, discuss with possible board action, award bid, and authorize execution of contract for sand seal coating, budget impact funded from the road department budget. Turn our attention to County Administrator Randy Harris.
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, we opened those bids today and we've given you all of the results of all of the bids. The low bid was hip construction, John C. Hip Construction from Alachua County, in the amount of $26,670. In fact, I'll just go ahead and point out, our high bid was $84,222. Significant difference between these bids, but our recommendation is that we award the bid and execute contract with hip construction.
All right, fellas, any discussion or do I have a motion?
Motion approved.
A motion, Commissioner Fleming, second. Commissioner Sessions, any discussion? All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Same sign. Moving on to item 17, discuss possible board action, any items related to the State's Attorney's Office if necessary. Do we have anything, Mr. Harris?
Mr. Chairman, we actually provided this to you as an additional agenda item. I know that, you know, I'll continue to put this number 17, what we're calling 17 tonight on here until we finish the State Attorney's Office and the parking lots, but we did go ahead and outline an item that we need action on, which is authorization to bid underground electrical service to this building, the judicial annex. And the reason for that is, in fact, I pointed out the other day, I was questioned about a prior authorization on underground electrical service, but that was actually on the other side of the new State Attorney's Office on the northeast corner that faces... side of the new state attorney's office on the northeast corner that faces the jail. We replaced that pole and we're putting underground power service to the state attorney's office. The issue with the power coming into this building is that the poles, there are two poles between here and the street, and they're actually sitting in the parking lot that has to be constructed for the state attorney's office. It'd be a good time to go ahead and install underground electric back to this building at that time since those poles are gonna have to be relocated. So we're asking for authorization to go ahead and bid that at this time.
Does anyone have any questions or any discussion?
How long would it take them to do it? To disconnect this pile?
Too long, I need it done now. I'm not sure. My plan right now is to do this thing for about two weeks, which is short, but we're gonna be on the phone calling contractors. I think all of you have heard me say in the past that I don't like bidding anything during the holidays, but because this is a pretty straightforward project, very simple scope of work. What we're actually bidding is largely the installation of the conduit underground and the wire to get here. The power company still has some participation in that as well. And what I may end up having to do, depending on the timeline, is have the power company on a temporary basis relocate those two poles and move them farther to the west to get out of the way of the parking lot, and then give us more time to get the bids back in, and we'll be talking to the contractors as well, let them know that we're on a short timeline, so my hope is that they can jump right on it and get it done for us. Realistically, it could easily be 30 days from today.
The bid that we had for the underground utilities on the state's attorney's office, there's no opportunity there to utilize that as a piggyback?
That's an excellent question, and I already addressed that question with the electrical contractor who really has no interest in doing the underground here.
Okay.
It's kind of a headache type of project for electrical contractors, and you can only anticipate with the soils that we have here, a lot of clay, and in this case, fiber optic, the new fiber optic cable has already been installed from the street back here to the new state attorney's office along with the new telephone main cable. So they're gonna be out there with spoons digging under that when they get to it to try to install these large four inch conduits to get back to this building. But I did make that attempt, and he made it, he was polite, but very clear that he wasn't interested in doing that job.
Understood. I don't have any further questions, gentlemen, if y'all don't, need a motion.
Motion approved.
One second. And a motion to approve, Commissioner Sessions, a second by Commissioner Hale. Any more discussion? All, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I have one question. Is it, is this an absolute necessity to put it underground, or is there any way to reroute it? Or is it gonna cost this county, I mean, looking at just trying to save the county's money, so?
In the long run, we're better off with it underground. You're always better with commercial services being underground, subject to elements of weather, storms, trees in the future, anything like that. In fact, I'll be honest with you, I'm surprised that we have so many commercial services overhead. If you've driven by, in fact, the sheriff's probably seen it, this new pole that we put in over here has really cleaned that up a lot. That's a self-supporting pole, we had to do that in order to get rid of the guy wires that were out there before because they interfered with the route of the stormwater drains that have to go through. So there are lots of benefits long-term with keeping your commercial services underground where you can.
Two, one thing I believe, I mean, as we move forward and building these new buildings, kind of cleaning up the backside of the courthouse, anytime that you have the opportunity to go underground with something, it's more eye peeling. I know that's not our goal here, but I mean, Swanee County's our county and we need to take some pride in it as we're starting to dress these buildings up. I mean, for too long, we've kinda met in a, what looks like a front of a hay barn, so we're slowly making progress and I think that this will add to it in the long run.
I understand that, I haven't seen the project, I have no idea about it, so I was asking.
Good question.
Any further questions? Got a motion, Commissioner Sessions, second by Commissioner Hale, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries 5-0. That was your additional agenda item, correct?
Yes, sir.
No further additional agenda items, moving on to item number 19, public comments and concerns. Didn't have any turned in, but I'll open the floor to anybody that'd like to take three minutes of our time. You dancing, you getting up?
That was a head fake.
Uh-oh, there we go. We thought it was a head fake back there. I'll give you three minutes.
Okay.
It started when you got up.
Yeah, but you just took two minutes of the time talking to me.
That's not my fault, you should've got started.
Bo Hancock, 6135 Wiggins Road. I'll just give you, I just came from the CRA meeting and I gave a little short presentation on the raid on the Swanee, the results of that, and I'm gonna give you the same presentation I gave them. The total attendance for the two-day event was 1,477. The estimated average expenditure per day, I just came from the survey data that we collected, was approximately $4 a day. I used an economic multiplier that came from Dr. Jackson. I met with him and went over all of this with him, and the multiplier, when you talk about economic development, they have different classes, different events pull in, have different ratios, numbers, and for our type of event, a festival, is 1.46. So that the estimated economic impact for our little two-day raid on the Swanee event was $86,257. And the return on the investment for every dollar that either the CRA or the TDC contributed to us to hold the event, the return was $9.69. So pretty good return on the investment for that, and on the surveys, we had a total of, and I ain't got that sheet, if memory serves me right, we had 257 surveys that were completed, which is pretty good, and we had three people that filled out the surveys that said that they would not come back next year. One reenactor, one spectator, and one of the vendors, and that was it. Everybody else was there, and we had excellent, good, fair, and poor as far as how the event was handled and the program itself, everything across the board, like 90% were excellent. No poor, one fair, so it was either excellent or good across the board. So I thought we did pretty good with that, and since you told me maybe we want to speak, so I did it. But I do think it's important that you know that what's going on in the community, because y'all can't always get around to everything that's going on in the county, but I think that the raid went real well this year. I didn't have the attendance numbers that I thought they ought to have been, but I'm hard to please sometimes.
Question, on the, the money, the way it's figured on the money brought in, that's taking into consideration everything, hotel stays, restaurants, gas, convenience store purchases?
Yeah, but one thing, we do have a problem in this county. There were approximately 20 people that I talked to that were staying overnight or spending two nights in motels. All of them were in Lake City. The ones we have up here on I-10, including the one at Winter Weetle and 129, all were full for that weekend. So we have got to get some more motels. I mean, everybody was staying over in Lake City, which didn't help our tourism dollars.
Everybody right here. We appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else for comment or concerns? Seeing none, moving on now to item 20, administrators' comments, any information, you got anything for us tonight?
Yes, I've got an excellent report. We finally, in fact, Mr. Chairman, you're aware of this, we finally got everything that we needed from everyone, all of the parties, including the participating party agreements, and got our packet turned in to CDBG Administrator today. In fact, Mr. Massey, and I don't believe he's here, but he hand-delivered that in Tallahassee for us today. The chairman is aware of this, but I'll just tell you the rest of you, it was right up to the wire. In fact, Mr. Privat's aware of it, too, because I had circulated an email expressing some concerns and communicating with one of the parties who had taken much longer than I had expected to go ahead and sign the participating party agreement. What I'm talking about is the grant funds from CDBG for construction of the railroad. You've heard me say before, this was the third portion of funding that I had been able to apply for, so they've indicated today that our packet was complete, and I am very excited about that because it's been almost a year and a half working on this whole packet and all of the information that goes in it, so I just wanted to share that with you.
Well, I was relieved that they finally signed it, we was able to get it there. I think tomorrow was the deadline.
Right, correct.
Yeah.
And by the way, they had told us early on, there is no extension of the timeline for submitting that, so that deadline was hard, that was a hard deadline, that was it if we didn't make it, and that meant that we would've had to start the entire process over and it would've been another year and a half.
With the funding pretty much secured, as far as the moving forward with the construction, are we gonna fall now in CSX timeframe on when they wish to move forward with it, or?
Well, we still have to wait for CDBG to finalize everything on their end, and then they'll let us know, some of you know this, let me just say that I have attempted over the last year to go ahead and start the project with funding that we already had. CDBG doesn't allow you to start anything until they have finalized their processes, so we've been waiting, even though we had those other two sources of funding all this time, that we could've started the railroad. So now I'm still waiting for the final approvals by them, and then they will let us know when we can go ahead and begin advertising for bid. Our plans and specifications are complete, we've already had CSX review those, they have no issues with our plans now, we've addressed all of their comments and responded and satisfied those. I will tell you that Klosner, early on, had indicated that they wanted to try to have their bid specs ready to be bid at the same time as ours as an additional, or what we call an alternate, so that they could realize some economies of scale in the bid process and maybe save on mobilization expenses, things of that nature. I've communicated to them on multiple occasions recently that they need to go ahead and ensure they have their specs and bid package together. Now, they'll have to pay for their portion of the work. All of the rail that splits off of our main line and then heads back toward their property will be paid for by them, and that'll be an entirely separate contract, it won't be intermingled with our contract at all, but that's one thing that I've indicated they need to have done. Now, I don't know how many of you might remember this, but early on in the development agreement on development of the Catalyst site where Klosner is sitting, the county had an obligation in the development agreement to, you know, ensure that there were suitable soils with a certain density over the entire site. Prior to the time we started, Klosner had indicated that they wanted us to bid their site work in addition to ours when we bid it. It was their obligation to have their plans and specifications complete when it was time for us to bid, and they never did get them to us, so we bid it anyway because we had a timeline, we had to be finished so that they could get started. About five months later, when we were nearing completion of that portion of the site work, they asked me why I hadn't bid their work. They realized that they hadn't bid it at the time and that they weren't gonna be able to save the mobilization expenses and all those other things they were hoping to save. We had an intense conversation about that, and I reminded them that it was their responsibility to provide their plans to us so that we could submit them in the bid package. I'm hoping that we don't have a repeat of that, but they have been forewarned that we are preparing to go to bid very soon. My hope is that they get their paperwork finished so that they can put it with ours. I have no idea what their timeline is, but...
I have no problem working with them and them bidding out with us, but I don't look to hold our project up to accommodate.
And we're not gonna have a contract that includes theirs, I don't anticipate that. But CSX then will have some other participation in the whole bid process in addition to CDBG. The other two agencies that we've received funding from will not have as much involvement in the bid process as CDBG will. The front-end documents associated with those contracts and bids are about three or four inches thick. There's a lot of paperwork that will go into that, so there's still a lot of work, but I'm feeling much better about it now that we have this monumental portion of the application behind us.
Any questions for Mr. Harris?
I don't have any.
Is that all you have, Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Seeing no questions, we'll move on to item 21, board members inquire requests, comments. I'm gonna start down here with Commissioner Don Hale.
No comments, just wanna wish everyone a Merry Christmas and don't forget what the season's really about. Happy New Year to everybody.
Mr. Sessions?
I'd just echo those comments, just hope everybody has a safe travel if you're going anywhere, just be careful along the road, there's been a lot of wrecks. Jump down to the other end, Mr. Richardson.
Echo those comments as well. I got a phone call today, just wanna share with people that are not used to this, so even in the past, you don't get a lot of phone calls like this from someone looking for a family to help. Usually you get the phone call saying, hey, we've got a family that needs some help, do you know anybody who can help them? This gentleman called me and said, I want a family to help this Christmas season, and it really brought out the spirit of Christmas in my heart this year, helping me with it more so, and I appreciate that. So I was looking forward to this Christmas season, as Mr. Hale said, remember what it's about. If you're Christian faith, then you know who it's about. If you're not, it's secular to you, then you know that it's about giving and not receiving. That's where we get the greatest blessing. So Merry Christmas to each one of the commissioners, the board, and to the public, and have a Happy New Year and a Safe New Year, and Mr. Harris as well.
Thank you.
Mr. Fleming?
Chairman, I'd like to say the same thing. I've voiced the sentiment of what each commissioner has said. I wish you a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, and we must remember what the season is all about. Commissioner Richardson has said so many times that we look over what the real meaning is about, and we, you know, we have to be thankful and grateful that God has allowed us this time upon earth. I also heard today, he mentioned about a phone call, I got a phone call by the passing of a young lady that I knew younger than I, much younger than me, she had kidney failure, and, you know, so many times we go about life and we don't realize that, how far we are from that last day, and we should take every day like it's our last day, and that's loving everybody every day, every single day. That's what the real meaning is about, so if we put that in perspective, then we'll be a better bunch of people. Thank you.
Thank you. I've got one thing, we get a lot of phone calls on our roads... I've got one thing, we get a lot of phone calls on our roads, people with complaints, issues, but the other day, I got a thank you card in the mail from one of my constituents, who had an issue that wound up taking up, I know we utilized two of our supervisors, maybe all three of them, LT, Mr. Schem, and Mr. Gamble. I went out there and took a look at his issue, and I gave each one of them a call, and kind of relayed the problem to them, and that afternoon, one of them had made it out there and rectified the issue that they were having, but by the next day, all three of them had been out there and addressed the issue that's related to the department that they supervise. And I meant to bring the card to read it to y'all, but I was in a hurry to get here at 5:15 and left it sitting on the table, but more or less, it was just expression thanks for the quick response and the time and the care that they put into their job and the effort. So I just wanted to relay that to y'all, so y'all could take it back to them and tell them, but people do notice, and they do take the time still to put, pen to paper and stick a stamp on it, put it in the mail, say thank you. Other than that, I wish everybody a Merry Christmas, thank y'all for bearing with me tonight. Let's get a little smoother as time goes on.
Speaking of smooth, Mr. Chairman, there was this thing called, a little bit up, further up the agenda.
County attorney items, but you didn't have anything on there.
But I wrote polls by mine.
This is streamlined edition, and if you ain't got it on there, it ain't getting rid.
I wrote poll next to that.
All right, well, going back to county attorney items, do you have any?
Can we move back to county attorney items? Yes, sir. I do have a couple of things that just came up today, well, that didn't come up today, but I think that, that we need to move forward on. Over the, the last board we had talked about, you know, before our new members were elected, we talked about the situation that happened on November 8th, where Amendment 2 was passed for the medical marijuana, you know, amendment. And it'll be taking effect in January, I believe on the 3rd, and we were moving forward and we were investigating the, the, how we would go about being able to, under the statute 391, to be able to determine the, the location and other factors that would be involved with placement for any permit that would be sought for a medical marijuana distribution place. And so what I'm, at this particular point, because after it does take effect, the legislature then has to also go through its rulemaking policy before everything will fall down into alignment, then we also don't have anything that's, you know, deals with it in, under our comprehensive plan and our LDRs. So we'll have to go back and address those particular items. So what I would like to do is get permission from y'all to investigate and to go ahead and draft and put forward a dispensary, medical marijuana dispensary moratorium, until we can see where everything is gonna shake out and fall out on this, and that we can also have our regulations prepared and be in line with all of those. So I wanted to get a consensus from y'all, if that's what you would like to do, or you wanna just barrel on forward as we go through. So let you know, if y'all could give me a consensus on that.
I don't have a problem with that moratorium on it. Does anyone else have a problem with it?
I think I do have a, a thing in mind, and I will distribute it to you. Of course, it's gonna take appropriate for the moratorium, and they have to be advertised like an ordinance, you know, for the 10-day requirement ahead of time, and what I'll do is, if you could, if I could get a vote for y'all to go ahead and when the final draft is prepared, to go ahead and advertise the appropriate title, which I have, and then we can then address the language, you know, at the hearing on the moratorium, so I can get a motion to advertise for that moratorium.
You just want a motion just to go ahead and advertise?
Yes, sir, the, the particular title, and we'll, that's what you do, you know, when you do the advertising, you have the title, then we'll have everything that will be out there specific, and then we can address it at the, at the meeting.
Now, is that a public hearing?
Yes, sir.
I don't have a problem.
Actually, I could be done twice.
I don't have a problem going ahead and advertising it. If anybody else?
We'll move that we allow them to. Do we have to bring this up before the motion?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
I got a motion by Commissioner Richardson to authorize county attorney to advertise. I got a second by Commissioner Fleming, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, I also have a second item that came, that came up this afternoon.
Nothing on there, you got a lot.
Well, like I said, it came up this afternoon, literally, when I left Mr. Harris's office this afternoon, a little after 4 o'clock, and I swung by my office before, you know, trying to get ready to come up here, there's other things, another item that came up, and it has to do with the TDC. You know, we had some issues with our TDC and with an older ordinance that we had from 1990, and y'all were, had foresight enough to go ahead and redo the ordinance as we were moving forward. Well, it was announced earlier today that Speaker Richard Corcoran plans to use the House oversight powers to see how the TDCs around the state are spending their tax dollars. We shall be receiving very shortly an audit letter, like we had anticipated before. I told you this was gonna be coming down the road, and now it's coming down the road, and y'all had foresight enough to go ahead and get it done and move forward. And I want to let you know that you've fallen back in line, and this would be a pleasure to be able to answer this letter now, under the format that we have going forward, and I appreciate y'all working diligently to move forward on that, to get it straightened out.
That it?
Yes, sir. Well, another item.
We get the hook. Does anyone have any else, more other comments, mister's? If not, I don't need, but one more thing.
Motion adjourned.
Motion to adjourn by Commissioner Richardson. All right.
Mr. Hale?
I didn't hear. Anybody? I figured.
How are you, sir?